Okay, hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. And in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. This evening, the Board meets under Business Session. And on the agenda, they have a number of items to include. Under New Business, the Board will be taking action to approve an application for payment with regard to the Brightville Park Playground Project. Following this, the Board will take action to approve a change order for said park playground project. Following that, the Board will take action to adopt the 2023 through 2027 Consolidated Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, that is the CDBG program. Following this, the Board will take action on, or actually rather, hear a presentation on ordinance 20-20, I'm sorry, 2024-01, which authorizes the execution of a cable franchise agreement with Verizon. Then following, finally, under Subdivision of Land Development, the Board will take action to approve a time extension for the Sheetz Store Number 412. Then following that, the Board will take action on the improvement guarantees, the payment of township authority bills, and then finally hear any final announcements. And with all that said, members of the Board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
We'd like to call the meeting to order for the Board of Lower Paxton Supervisors Business Meeting. Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Paul Navarro.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to announce that the Board did meet an executive session prior to the meeting, and there will be a short executive session after the meeting. We have approval of minutes from January the 2nd, 2024, the Annual Reorganization and Business Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that would like to speak under public comment? Sir? Yeah? Would you please come to the podium and give your name and your address, please?
It's not only a jet, right? My name is Albert Banks, 6551 Lighters Lane, in the Hydras Heights location. And my concern or topic that I wanted to speak on tonight has to do with the sanitation and other trucks that enter the Hydras Heights Park to go to the landfill. Near the only entrance near the park, there's an awful lot of trucks that enter at a high rate of speed sometimes, sometimes not, to enter the compost area. And my concern is, is that there's no postings for the trucks to slow down, and there's no postings for the trucks to watch out for children that play in the park. There's nothing of a crosswalk or any kind of police facility for entry to the same, into the park through the same entrance that trucks are allowed to go in. People can't negotiate sometimes. And it just so happens that this past weekend, my wife was entering the park, and she just happened, I didn't bring it with me, but she took a picture of four trucks, different trucks, that she was walking her dog, and they didn't blow their horn or whatever, they just barreled in. So I guess my concern is, is that that needs to stop, that needs to change. There is another way to get into the compost area if trucks need to get their service vehicles of whatever sort the township might need or feels necessary to go into that area. I don't know if they're contractors, but most of the trucks seem to be marked with Lower Paxton Township. And there are different types of trucks. And, but they could enter the compost area from the same area that pedestrians go in to the compost area. Now, I don't know what the rules are or what the limitations might be, but as long as I've been here, trucks have been going in both directions. But here in the past couple of years, they've only been going in the direction of the playground. And so as long as we're going to keep the playground active, and seems to be more and more people slowly using the playground for different reasons, and they're bringing young children, sometimes they're bringing animals or whatever, but there's not a whole lot of space there for trucks and people to negotiate that area. But I wanted to bring that to your attention and maybe can come up at a future topic.
Okay. You had said the weekend, so you're talking Saturday or Sunday?
Yes.
Okay. Brad, I didn't think that was open on Saturday and Sunday, except for the compost area.
It's, the compost area is not supposed to be open at all right now.
Well, not till April. That's what I'm trying to figure out, why the trucks on a Saturday or Sunday would be going in, you know, even up there by the playground.
Right, right.
And they say Lower Paxton Township on them?
They did say Lower Paxton Township.
Okay.
It's the first time I'm hearing that. We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
No worries. We'll take a look and see what's going on and get to the bottom of it.
Okay. All right, and he can get in touch with our Public Safety Director and see if we can, if there's any signs that we need to put up there to slow down, watch children, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. All righty. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree with you. I thought it was closed, so it wouldn't matter if it was Monday, Saturday, or Sunday. It's closed, it's closed.
Yeah, 'cause, well, our employees don't work on Saturday and Sunday, so that was my, that was my question, so. Okay, well, we'll get with our Public Works Director and the Public Safety Director, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay. Chairman and Board Member comments. Are there any Chairman and Board Member comments? Okay, we're good. Managers' report. Mr. Gottschall.
Madam Chair, I have no official report this evening.
Good report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. No old business. Under New Business, we have action to approve application for payment number six from Regal Inc. for the Brightville Park Playground Project. Mr. Gottschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board, in your packet you will find a copy of a memo from YSM Consultant, this being the consultant that we are utilizing for this project and many other parks projects around the township. This action this evening is prepared for Board action, and it is a recommendation for the payment, for application for payment number six, being in the amount of $44,334 even.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to help answer any questions if the Board may have some.
Does Board have any questions?
Just one. This is the sixth application. When's it stop?
Well, sir, next on the agenda is a change order, so the Board will be receiving, you know, at least one other application for payment and probably more than that. It's, the project is nearing completion. With the approval of the change order subsequent to this, the project will be pretty near completion.
What's the completion date?
Well, we're hoping, the, I think the start of the formal, that park begins sometime in May, so it certainly has to be done by that point, but we are expecting it to be done much sooner than that, so.
Brad, can you recall what the total package deal, what this was, the amount?
It should be, it should be on the next page. It should be on the change order.
Oh, well, it would be for the change order. Okay, well, we can get to that question after.
Is that it? One, one, one. That's a total, overall project. And the next page shows you the contract value.
Brad?
Yes, ma'am.
What change did we request?
So I can explain it on the next item.
Yeah, we'll have to do the first one and then the next one, we can approve it. Okay. I was just, you know, because Norm questioned the sixth, you know, payment, I was just curious what the overall total was.
Looks like the overall contract for this contract was $696,969.
Okay.
And actually, just to note, this being the sixth pay-up, Regal has regularly provided a monthly completion report, so this is just the sixth time that we've reached that. We're about six months in, so it works out pretty evenly that way.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Do I have any questions from the public? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the application for payment number six from Regal Inc. for the Brightville Park Playground Project in the amount of $44,334?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next one is action to approve change order number one from Regal Inc. for the Brightville Park Playground Project.
Yes, so members of the Board, this change order that is before the Board this evening is in the amount of $6,939. And this, this change order particularly is for the addition of rolled curbing along the, there's a handicap parking space that has been newly installed there, and this is to add some rolled curbing in that general area to better direct the flow of stormwater into a newly installed storm drain, so that's what that is. And like I said, once the change order is approved this evening, the contractors will immediately begin that work and continue progress on this project.
Was that missed through the engineering in the beginning?
I believe so, yeah. It wasn't anticipated, but since it's been installed for, you know, a brief period of time so far, they've noticed that, it's going to need that to better and more appropriately direct that storm.
Well, public safety is first, so. Okay. Do I have any Board questions? Anything from the public? I have an action to approve change order number one from Regal Inc. for the Brightville Park Playground Project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next one be action to adopt the 2023 through 2027 Consolidated Plan for Community Development Block Grant Program. Mr. Gottschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, I will give a brief overview of this, not to dwell on it this evening, as we have had two other public meetings in order to properly present this plan and solicit public and Board feedback, and also feedback from some additional external stakeholders, but the township, for the first time since the release of the 2020 census, has been able to take advantage of becoming a direct entitlement community through the, through the federal HUD. And, and so, the CDBG program now is going to allow the township to take part in direct allocation of federal dollars for a number of program opportunities, and some of those opportunities come in the form of housing rehabilitation, homeownership assistance, public facilities and improvements, blight removal, demolition, and site preparation, code enforcement, economic development, acquisition and disposition of real property, as well as public services. And these are the service areas that are eligible funding activities through the federal The, there are some additional national objectives through HUD that need to be met as well in order to properly and efficiently spend this money, and that, those national objectives are to meet the benefit of low and moderate income persons, the prevention or elimination of blight, and also other urgent needs, such as meeting the urgent needs of health and welfare throughout the community. The, through this public feedback, as well as feedback from stakeholders, the township was able to identify a number of consolidated plan goals, which are housed within this 141-page document that the Board will be acting on tonight. And those plan goals include providing public services, improving public facilities and infrastructure, promoting and supporting economic development, and also some planning and administrative functions. And with all that said, the township this year, within the 2023-2024 funding program, will be receiving $222,129 to go to address those previously mentioned plan goals. And then, to drill down a little further into the, into the plan, the township has identified specific projects to meet those previously mentioned goals, to include approximately $177,000 for parks and recreation improvements, and $44,400 for planning and administration. And again, those particular projects and goals were really identified through that public information and solicitation session, as well as various meetings to solicit internal and external stakeholder feedback as well. So with all that said, like I'd mentioned, we had met several times on this, I'd been keeping the Board briefed along the process, and unless the Board has any questions particularly related to the plan before the Board this evening, it would be in order for Board action to approve not only this five-year consolidated plan, but also the specific 2023 action, action plan.
Does any Board members have any questions for Mr. Gottschall?
I got a, I had three. He answered one. And I have a comment. First, the comment, I think it's a great idea. Two, I don't remember a public meeting on this. Where did I miss that?
Yeah, we had two.
On that specific thing?
Yeah.
I must have been sick that day.
You know, the first one, it was Brad, myself, Mr. Claire, and his wife.
Well, it's not a board meeting.
It wasn't a board meeting, they were extra, public meetings.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, okay. All right. I'm with you. Okay.
And then there was just one, two weeks ago, I think, and I think Ms. Thompson was at, was at that one, so.
And where was that held?
Uh, right here.
In the executive room, where we just met.
I missed that one, too. I was sick that day, too.
Yeah.
So I got the amount, that's great. And where did the money come from?
Yeah, so again, since, since the township has officially met the threshold of 50,000 persons through the 2020 census, we were able to become a direct entitlement community. And so, previous to this point, we had been eligible to go to the county to, I'll say, competitively request their CDBG funding. And now, however, since we've done the process of becoming entitlement community, we now get direct annual allocations. So that basically comes from the county allocation, but we now get that directly. So, it comes from HUD. Yep.
Mr. Gottschall, like, if, once we motion, if we accept this tonight, then how far out is it before we actually receive the money?
That was a good question that was, that was asked. Do you remember the same, the answer to that? It was kind of a convoluted answer. It's a federal program, so it's a convoluted answer.
I don't.
Yeah.
I mean, are you talking next year, or is it good for this year?
Oh, it's good for this year, yeah. Well, we're kind of in an awkward position, having just started this program. We're going to be, we're talking technically about the 2023 allocation of 222,000, but really, this plan allows us to also, at the same time, talk about 2024, 2025 allocation. So we'll really be getting 400, you know, 444,000, pretty, pretty consecutively, right? Basically, back to back.
Okay.
So.
So would the, the first allocation would go for parks and rec, and then you said planning and administration, so then we would have to decide where the second allocation for 2024 would go?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the Board, and now moving forward, the Board will have to take action every year to approve their annual action plan. So this is the five-year consolidated plan, but also, the Board will now have to do annual action plans, and along with that, you know, continue to solicit public feedback like it has done this, this first go-around.
Okay. Is there any public comment? And thank you, Mr. Claire, for participating also. We appreciate it. If there's no comment, do I have a motion to adopt the 2023? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did have a comment.
Okay, can you go to the podium, please?
Yeah, Albert Banks, from 6551 Lighters Lane. Are the funds targeted in some way, or is it township-wide, and so certain areas of the township's discretion for projects to be funded under this allocation, or is there a demarcation of some sort that the strength of your eligibility is based on blighted conditions, et cetera? So I would assume there's certain areas that are targeted and certain areas that are not, like more well-to-do areas, for instance, would not receive an allocation, I'm thinking, as opposed to other areas that, that might be failing in some way, and are targeted in your application?
Yeah, so 70% of the annual allocation, so 70% of the 222,000 must be spent on addressing one of those goals within low to moderate income tracks. We're, I'll say, blessed in Lower Paxton to have fairly limited concentrations specifically of low to mod income census tracks. So the, kind of the flip side to that is the fact that we have very, very limited spaces to actually get that goal accomplished, that 70%. However, if we use the funding to address ADA-related concerns, we may do so outside of those tracks. So if it's something, if it's a use that is perceived to benefit the low to mod income individuals within the township, like ADA, we may, we may use it in that, in that regard. But they are other projects that are specific to a, a specific area, such as a, say, for example, the township were to stand up a, some sort of a facade improvement program, where we're assisting folks with rehabbing their facade of their home, that must be done just within the low mod census tract, because it's specific to a residence or one specific individual or family. So if that helps answer the question, that's kind of how we, it's a, it's a tricky answer because it's, it really is based on the project and, like I said, meeting specific national goals and things like that, but, but that's the essence of it.
So as you identify a project, and I'll use the, what you just said, something of a, an accessway on a sidewalk, for instance, for handicap access, and that's located in five locations. Each of those locations that you're going to spend funds to create the curb cuts for the sidewalk to be established, would have to be justified to say, if I'm understanding you correctly, that there's a certain number of users for this accessway who are low income, or it's in a neighborhood that's otherwise designated with X number of low income, or it's in a jurisdiction of the area, the township that is accessible for low income, because otherwise, I'm not sure how you would use the funds.
Yeah, that's, yeah, good, good question. Now, if it's, if it's something that's publicly accessible, like curb cuts, like the ADA ramps, they could be done anywhere.
Okay.
Because it's assumed that, you know, a low mod individual can be walking, you know, wherever, within the township. It's not, not necessarily specific to their particular, you know, census tract, so they could be done anywhere.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Great. Okay, any other, Mr. Minsker?
Good evening, Board. I am Bill Minsker, 5956.
I am Bill Misker, 5956 Lingelstown Road. Uh, in connection with Mr. Banks' question, uh, the board will probably remember in the early 2000s, we had the Village of Lingelstown Committee, uh, which was responsible, you set us up to take care of the $6 million project of redoing Lingelstown with the roundabouts and the bypass and off-street parking and sidewalks and trees and streetlights and water and gas and curbing and all that sort of thing. As that project was being completed, uh, we talked amongst ourselves about where do we go next? And we never went anywhere next, but I'm curious, uh, maybe Brad, you can answer this question. Would sidewalks along La Rue Street be a project that could be considered? We talked about this. Uh, La Rue Street on both sides, going back to the park and going into Pennsylvania Avenue, is a very narrow road. Uh, the road is almost up against the houses, and people walk there all the time, and there are almost no sidewalks. Would that be a project that might fall under a community development block, block grant?
Uh, just the ramps, just the ADA ramps.
Not the sidewalks themselves?
No. It, it, it really is narrowly focused to, um, accessibility, um, you know, both physically and, and accessibility to government services for, um, for, you know, specific groups or, or, um, you know, populations.
Okay, thank you.
So it would help to fray it, but.
Any other questions from the public? Okay. With that said, do I have a motion to adopt the 2023-27 Consolidated Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is the first presentation of ordinance 2024-01, authorizing the execution of a cable franchise agreement with Verizon Pennsylvania LLC. Um, Mr. Miller or Mr. Gutschall?
I'll take that, ma'am chair. Um, so, members of the board, we'll try and keep this brief, because again, this is a pretty simplistic agreement to get through. There's obviously a lot of legalese, but it's structured very similar to past agreements we've executed, as well as, uh, the most recent Comcast, a 10-year agreement that we signed. But I'll focus on some of the major changes and then what's brought us to this point, which has been kind of a long gestating negotiation. Uh, the last agreement with Verizon was a 10-year agreement that went from 2008 to 2018. So we've been without a franchise agreement now for about six years. Negotiations have been ongoing for many years now, uh, kind of complicated by the pandemic itself, but also by a very changing landscape with regards to cable television. I'm sure are well aware of the, uh, now very competing streaming services and packages folks have to kind of complement what cable used to be. So, uh, the industry itself has gone through quite a flux, and there's been a lot of change with the FCC. So that's brought the negotiations a, a little bit more active between the parties. Uh, the township within the county engaged Cohen to assist in the overall negotiations. Uh, Cohen is a law firm out of Pittsburgh that really focuses, um, very specifically on FCC rule and negotiation of these type of franchise fee agreements. So, uh, I've worked with them in previous employ as well. They're pretty much the ones to go to. Uh, so we were certainly in good hands from that perspective. Uh, the fee had been and remains the same at 5% of the cable gross revenue. Um, that gross revenue covers about 22 different categories of services. There were a couple of categories added in this newer, newest agreement, which covers some additional, uh, regional sports fees and, and things of that nature, smaller items, um, to help ensure that it collects across the entire gross complement of cable direct services. Um, the, the couple major changes in this last, in this agreement here versus the last agreement are, it cuts the time in half from 10 years to five years. Typically, governments want the agreements to be shorter, and the cable companies want the agreements to be longer, because again, it's a, it's an investment in the infrastructure throughout the entire township to provide essentially an exclusive cable service within that jurisdiction. Um, the reason for their desiring the, the lesser agreement time was so much uncertainty within the cable environment. Uh, from a revenue standpoint, we've seen about a $300,000 decline in the last 10 years, uh, as far as the, this revenue source for the township between the Verizon and Comcast agreements. So they wanted more flexibility with the agreement moving forward. There was also strong negotiation in relation to, um, the ability to terminate the contract. Verizon wanted more unilateral termination at any point based on their metrics showing it was time to end it in advance. Uh, it was negotiated in that, uh, certain metrics were needed to be met as far as the decline with revenues before they could invoke a termination request, and at the point of invoking that request, they would still have to keep the contract open for an additional year. So, uh, that is actually a little bit more aggressive than what the prior contract had been before, which allowed pretty much a 90-day resolve after the first three years of that 10-year contract. Um, we don't expect that to be the case, but again, uh, everything is a cautious review of how the, uh, industry is ever-changing. Uh, another negotiation point was for a PEG grant. PEG is Public Educational and Governmental Access Channel. So obviously, we, we promote our, um, meetings, uh, live via television and also provide those to the public post in, uh, YouTube environment. We're also looking and investing in, in streaming capability as well here very shortly. But as part of that, typically you would negotiate a grant which would help you offset costs to manage that process, you know, everything within, within this room, everything within our next-door room, to manage how we manage our functions for public access and information. Uh, the grant we negotiated, uh, from the agreement was $26,577. This was exactly half of the 10-year agreement that we had recently negotiated with Comcast. So we were glad that, that, uh, that worked out in a comparable standpoint. Uh, we'll use that for investment upgrades in our meeting room next door with regards to audio and video capabilities, to strengthen those, and, um, including, uh, phone integration and some, uh, new motion tracking with the video. So that should give us more capabilities within, uh, that environment. And overall, the, the remaining terms remain very similar to the way they were before with regards to the requirements of provision of services by Verizon and, um, the ability to audit, uh, any of their records and details that they provide to us on a monthly basis. Uh, with that, this is the first reading of an ordinance, so further action will be taken, but certainly we'll take any more, uh, any questions by the board this evening.
Okay.
What have we been doing, during the, the gap between the end of the prior contract and the beginning of the, what's been going on during the gap?
It continues under those, uh, those terms. They essentially remain open until an additional agreement has been placed. So, uh, we continue to receive the 5% franchise fee charged, and the prior agreement allowed for a much smaller annual PEG grant, which is a neighborhood of about $3,000. So those terms continued as the negotiations progressed.
Okay, the terms continued for the last five years?
Yes.
So we were getting, still getting paid?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want any comments or questions from the public? Okay, well, this was the first reading, um, so this will be on the March 19th.
Yes, ma'am.
Meeting, okay. All righty. Uh, subdivision and land development, um, action to approve a time extension for the preliminary final land development plan for Sheet Store number 412, rebuild plan, uh, number 23-25. Mrs. Erby?
Yes, good evening, Board. This is actually the preliminary final land development plan for the Sheet Store, not the time extension. So.
Oh, okay, so our packet was wrong.
Just the wording in your packet. Your packet is correct. All the information that you received with, with the standard packet was included.
Okay.
Just for some reason, time extension was included.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So this is the preliminary final land development plan for the Sheet Store, number 412, located at 6290 Allentown Boulevard. It involves demolishing the existing 5,483-square-foot Sheets Convenience Store, including the drive-through car wash, removal of the existing gas pumps and canopies, and the underground storage tanks. The project proposes construction of a new 6,139-square-foot Sheets Convenience Store with drive-through window, relocated gas canopies and tanks. The existing parking lot paving and curbing will be replaced as well. The site has a total area of 2.45 acres and is located within the commercial neighborhood zoning district. The plan was approved at the February 7, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. The plan has two waiver requests, which staff supports, and only three administrative comments and five general comments to satisfy prior to recording. And I believe Terry Dello from Integrated Consulting is here this evening on behalf of Sheets to answer any questions for the board.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. So, I mean, that was a, a perfect introduction to the project, so I will entertain any questions, and then we have folks from Sheets here tonight, too, that can answer any questions from their perspective.
So how old, and I can't remember, how old is this Sheets building?
It opened in 2008.
2008.
Around 2008, yes.
Okay. Cause I know the, the last time you were here, you said usually at 15 years, you like to, um, tear them down and, and rebuild, so.
Three, seven, seven.
It doesn't, it doesn't seem like it's been that long. Okay. Does the board have any questions, um, for Terry or anybody from the Sheets Corporation?
So this is just like the Lingelstown Road situation? Tear it down?
Rebuild it.
Build up a bigger one?
Everything down and back up with new. That's correct, yes.
And, um, what's the timeline?
The town will close the store in the, like, four months, four to five months, at the moment.
Okay. When do you, when do you, and so you said four to five months, for those listening, from the time you close it?
Um, yeah, so we would end depending on how the rest of the permitting process would...
Do you know what? Do you want to come up to the podium? Cause we're on television and, um, then every, all the residents can hear.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, so if the rest of the permitting process would follow as we anticipate, we would start in June and then, um, be back open, you know, October, November, so.
Okay.
Be somewhat aggressive.
So you, I...
We don't like to keep them closed for very long.
Right. But is this one going to still have a car wash?
It will not.
This one will not? Okay, so that'll take the place of the drive, or that, the drive-through will take the place of the car wash?
Where are people gonna go and get their car washed?
Oh, trust me, we have nine.
In Lower Paxton.
How many do we have? We have nine in Lower Paxton Township. We're okay.
He's teasing you.
I think I passed, I think I passed one or two on my way to the store. Yeah.
Well, I did think of you guys, because that was one of the, I'm not going to say the first, but it was.
Yeah.
One of the, the more convenient ones, and I see the competition, so, uh, cause people always ask me about how do these places, how do all these car washes show up? And I say, I often ask, and they say the market will bear it, and not to give any secret, but I guess this is a decision that you're making based on the market, just like the folks who came in?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and we think there's a benefit to our customers for adding the drive-through. So as we evaluate, you know, the drive-through versus the car wash, um, just like everything else is changing, you know, people will place their orders on their app or online, and then they can use the drive-through to come pick it up. So instead of parking and going in, you know, you can pick up your food that way, so it's just an added...
So the drive-through, yeah, so the drive-through is just for the food, then?
Technically, no. You could get whatever you wanted through there.
So like if you wanted a candy bar, you would, you would have somebody inside the store?
Yes.
That would go get a candy bar and, wow.
Yes.
You want a six-pack.
We made you all the line there.
So the, um, the same...
Unless he's talking soda, then.
I'll take Cheetos. Um, the, the same amount of guest, um, islands there's going to be, that's, it's out there right now, or will you be expanding?
Reduced by one.
Reduced by one? Okay. Okay. And I was reading about the ADA, Amanda, and the, the curb cutout, so we're okay with everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Staff, staff agreed with the waiver requests.
Okay. So with the waivers and all the comments, um, Sheets, okay fulfilling everything?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Right.
You'll still be required to have X number of seats available for people that want to...
Yes, we'll have, um, indoor seating, a minimum of 30, and then we'll also have some outside seating.
Okay. Do I have any questions from the public?
Should people in the neighborhood expect any impact as far as traffic or anything like that? I mean, obviously you're hoping for as much business as possible, but...
Yeah, um, if, uh, once construction starts, you know, you'll have a couple obvious, um, some deliveries and what have you, but in, in general, uh, there shouldn't be too much interruption, so.
I see. So you're going to change the direction of the pumps?
That's correct.
Pretty much the entire thing is going to change. Cause I was looking at the traffic flow, but it looks like you're going to have enough, you'll have enough space there for the traffic.
Yeah, we've...
Coming off, cause you're rearranging the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The drive-in will be over on the side where the car wash is now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the pickup window for the drive-through, you'll place your order as we're looking at the sheet. You would place your order to the north of the sheet.
Mm-hmm.
And then come through, and basically the pickup window's in the same general area as the car wash is today. I think where you would place your order would be similar to where the vacuums are now.
Okay. So did it only take four months for the one on Lingelstown? I was thinking it took a little longer.
That one may have taken a little longer. I'm, I'm not, I wasn't involved in that.
I was thinking it was maybe closer to six.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, but four months?
We're pretty aggressive.
Okay. Nice. I mean, that's nice that you tear them down and refurbish them. Now, the one on Union Deposit, that's been there a long time.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm thinking over 15 years.
Yeah, I'm trying to, is that on the list? I think it's on the list upcoming.
Oh, is it? Oh, that's a busy one.
Yeah.
That's a very busy one. Okay. All righty. Uh, Board, do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just that you're on board with the administrative comments that, that were made by our administration?
Yes.
Okay. We good? Okay. Um, do I have an, a motion to approve a time extension? Nope, excuse me, Amanda, no time extension. Uh, to approve for the preliminary final land development plan for Sheet Store, number 412, rebuild plan, number 23-25.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck to you, and thanks for, uh, being in Lower Paxton Township. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Improvement guarantees. We have, I think there's three. We have three. Wise Market, uh, 100 North Hox Road, and Autumn Oaks Phase 2A. Um, do I have any questions about the improvement guarantees? Do I have a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
To make a motion to improve, to approve the improvement guarantees?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, payment of bills. Mr. Treasurer?
Yes, I make a motion to pay the bills, so that, uh, yeah.
Lower Paxton Township, Lower Paxton Township Authority.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, do we have any announcements, uh, Mr. Gutschall, Mr. Miller, board members? We're good? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?